Whenever you're ready, Denise. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Whoops, I'm on the wrong sheet. Hang on. Here we go. Well, anyway, welcome anyway, City Committee of the Whole Meeting, Tuesday, April 18th. Time is 6:45. We did not have a meeting yesterday as normal due to the light agenda, so we rescheduled it today for 6:45. Thank you all for being here. I guess, Counselor, if you could just kind of explain what the process is?
Thank you, Your Honor, and it's nice to have you in the chair next to me. Because the mayor is out of town and the mayor pro tem is also out of town, we have a bit of an unusual situation here. So, under our council rules, to elect the presiding officer, we just need a council vote appointing Greg as the presiding officer for tonight's council meeting subsequent to our Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Do you need a motion?
I do. I need a motion, yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that Gregory Adamson Esquire be appointed the mayor pro tem for tonight's meeting.
That's good.
Oh, it got gagged.
Well, boy. You guys can pick out who got that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Passes. Always the bridesmaid, never the bride. Well, I can't say that anymore, right? Okay, so I'm now appointed to preside over tonight's meeting. We have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. We're going to hear a brief update from our finance director, Jason Shat, on items number 10 and 11. Jason?
Thank you, Your Honor. It is with great pleasure that I come to you tonight for the adoption of the fiscal year 2324 budget. This has been a long drawn out process, as you know, and you're going to have the pleasure of hearing me talk about it twice tonight, as if you haven't heard enough about it already. Budget highlights of the 2324 budget that begins July 1 of 23. We're going to take advantage of the continued growth in property valuation to maintain the city's property tax levy rate at 1265 per 1,000 evaluation. Thank you. This levy rate limits property tax increases on the average home to less than 1%. An important note here on the city's growth and how important that is as the driver of our economic engine. Eighty percent of new tax revenue in FY 2324 is attributable to newly constructed properties. This is going to provide some funding for some necessary staffing additions in community development and in solid waste. We're funding the IT strategic plan, including the replacement of the city's financial system. We're funding an aggressive CIP program that includes Forest Grove Road and Middle Road and the Landing Project. And it does require some moderate fee increases in the city's utility enterprise funds, those being the sanitary sewer, stormwater utility, and the solid waste utility. And a first for my career, we'll be adopting a budget that's a little bit different than the budget we posted in a public hearing notice. We posted a levy rate of 1270 and total tax dollars of just over 35 million in that public hearing notice, but council can adopt a budget and levy rate less than 1270, but not more.
Jason, do you have a PowerPoint up?
I do.
Can we get that to the screen, Denise?
You know? See if this does it.
Yeah.
Well, that didn't do it. I apologize.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Now, I can't see it, so I might be looking over my shoulder a little bit. As I was saying, council has the option to adopt a budget less than, but not more than the budget we published in that public hearing notice, and staff is recommending that we go ahead and adopt that budget with a levy rate of 1265, which is the same as it was in the current year, so maintaining that levy rate at the same. Again, to maximize the city's potential tax growth under pending legislation, we're recommending we combine all of those levies currently utilized into one single levy in the general fund, and this just shows you the difference between the current year and fiscal year '24 coming up, where we're taking the various levies we currently use: health insurance, liability insurance, police and fire pension, transit, and lumping those together with the general fund. We'll continue to levy about 485 in the debt service fund for a total of 1265. Change in property taxes on a residential and commercial property is shown here. The average value, the mean home, assessed as of January 1 of 2022 in Bettendorf was 272,723. That's the tax or the assessment that is applicable to FY 2324. That really did not change. This was not a reassessment year, so no change in value or no change in taxes due to the value. The rollback applied by the state went from 54.13 up to 54.65%, so that did add $18 to the tax bill of that home. We are not changing the levy rate. So, the total increase is $18 on that average home. It's less than 1% over the previous year. On the commercial side, the average value is just over a million bucks. No change in value, no impact to taxes that way. The rollback on commercial is 90%, but the first 150,000 of value is now taxed at the same rate as residential. So, that wiped away about $670 off of this property's tax bill. We do not recommend changing the levy rate, so no change there. So, in total, a commercial property valued at about $1 million, we'll see a tax bill that's $670 less than last year. We're down about 6%. We are increasing some fees in those utility funds, as I mentioned. This table shows the impact of not only those fees, but also the property tax on that average home. So, as you work your way down the table, you'll see property taxes going up about 1794. We said $18 on the previous slide. There's some rounding. Sewer fees are going up 15 cents per unit. That'll cost $13.20 for the year. The increase will. Stormwater fees are up 20 cents. That'll be $2.40 for the year. And solid waste fees are up 3%. On a 65-gallon cart, that's $6.36 for the whole year. The total increase, everything everywhere on this average home for taxes and fees is just under $40 or $3.33 per month. Total cost of services, $2,503, up just 1.6%. Similar notes on the commercial side. I won't walk all the way through it, but as we talked about, they're getting a tax break, so add in a couple of fee increases and their total cost of services will be reduced by just over 600 bucks for the year. We're down 4.5%. And then finally, if we kind of shift our thinking back to the current year now, these are current year numbers, but it gives council and the public an idea of where we stand when compared to others. If you took that average home, that $272,000 home, and the average use of utilities and such, and put it down in any one of these 20 other cities around Iowa that have a population over 24,000, you would get these costs. And you can see, we rank relatively highly on this list of 21 cities. I think we're in about eighth position, but that top eight is very, very tight in total cost. You'll see a range of about 2,200 bucks to 2,400 bucks in total cost of city services on these homes. So, we're very proud of that. And even more proud of our standing on the operations side. So, same information, but we removed the debt levy from the equation. We know that our debt levy is high because we take on a very aggressive CIP, but we counter that by being very lean on operations, and that's shown right here. We rank number one in the cost of operations that are passed on to our citizens. The cost of operations on that average home, $1,754 a year, or the least of these 21 Iowa cities. And that is all I have for you on the adoption of the budget. We've covered a lot over the last couple of months, so I kept it brief tonight because I think council is very well informed on what we're doing.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to leave the remaining items on our operational agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. These items will remain on the operational agenda. Let's move to our consent agenda. Any questions concerning any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Frank has something.
I'm sorry. Frank, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Any idea how things have affected delivery of the playground equipment on item C? Is it? I believe it's C, yeah. Is that something that's going to take more than a year?
I don't believe so. I think that actually is something they currently have in stock. I know Brian had been working with the vendor Burke and AB Creative for quite a while over several of the last months, and Jason, I think I saw Jason Manfold down there. Jason, do you have any update on that?
I think it should be finished by fall, and we should be putting it in by mid to late summer.
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. I'd like to enter... Oh, I'm sorry. Jerry?
A follow-up question, please. So, we will not be tearing out the old equipment until the new equipment is ready to come?
We should be tearing out the old equipment fairly soon. We are not having our playground stationed down at Meyer Park this year. Instead, it's going to be at McManus Park, so we pre-planned for that transition, but we should be tearing it out probably early summer or anytime now.
There is a fair amount of prep work that has to be done in preparation for that, so there has to be all new curb and gutter and all new base stone applied, so that will still be a separate bid item to come. We're just going to use a local flatwork contractor to do that. So, that is a period of time that's probably, you know, four to eight weeks worth of demo time for our guys and then installation for the new prior to scheduling of the new installation.
So, we'll just have to put out a notice to the neighborhood then that they got to find another park to use?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda to remain as set.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll take up the consent agenda as written on our regular City Council meeting, which starts in a couple of minutes. Any other items to be added to tonight's agenda by council? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned for one minute. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. The time is 7:00 PM. And fourth word, Alderman Gregory Adamson will be presiding over tonight's council meeting as both the Mayor Gallagher and Mayor Pro Tem Nauman are out of town this evening. With that, Michelle, please call the roll.
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Lanners?
Here.
Nauman? Sessler?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Alzetsky?
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, if everyone could please remove any hats or headdresses you may have. Join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation given by Pastor Richard Pacora of All Saints Lutheran Church.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How you doing, sir?
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this absolutely beautiful day, and we remember in the midst of this that there are days, maybe in January or February, where it's not so beautiful. And it sets us thinking about our lives, how there are beautiful days and there are other days. But we know on the other days, when things aren't quite going right, we feel tested and we are put to the test. And then on the good days, well, we're thankful and joyful for that. And so, we know that in life, that's just the way it is. There are days when we are tested, and then there are days that we receive with joy. And so, with that in mind, we ask you to be with us in those times, to guide us when we are being tested, to make us generous when we are being thankful. All of these things, we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we have three proclamations to issue tonight. First one is for the National Work Zone Awareness Week. Is Jeff here?
I do not see Jeff.
Okay, don't see him here. So, I'll do that one from here. Jeff represents the Illinois, he's Illinois Vice President for Quad City Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO.
You can do it. You can do it here.
From the office of the mayor. Whereas highway and street construction work, as well as repairs to roadways, are often completed while roadways are open to traffic, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas public works, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, and other emergency personnel also put themselves in harm's way on the roads each and every day during the performance of their duties. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways so that motorists can safely and efficiently travel. And whereas accidents can be prevented by setting aside distractions, using extra caution, reducing speed, and giving work zones your undivided attention when traveling through. Now, therefore, I Gregory Adamson, on behalf of Robert S. Gallagher, Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim April 17th through the 21st, 2023, as National Work Zone Awareness Week, and encourage all motorists to be extra vigilant on the roadways, whether in a work zone, passing police, fire, rescue, towing, or other personnel.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Okay, was that one? Let's get that to them. The second one is National Library Week. And for that, library director Julian Ashleman. Ashleman? Meet me up.
Be close.
I've only known you for like two years.
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you. Okay.
The office of the mayor. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civil engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, I Gregory Adamson, on behalf of the Mayor Robert Gallagher, City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim April 24th through the 29th, 2023, as National Library Week, and April 25th, 2023, as National Library Workers' Day, and encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available.
Here, here.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Comments?
Sure. Thank you all so much. You know, I think libraries sometimes have to work against the stereotype that we're these stuffy, archaic institutions, but really, we're dynamic buildings where, you know, we're constantly evolving to meet the needs of our community. And we're, you know, whether it's through books, the digital space, or, you know, hands-on learning through programming or our maker space, we're constantly providing new ways for people to access information. And the best asset that the library has, though, is our staff. I work with a tremendous group of people who are creative and passionate and fun and that are really just constantly looking for new ways to enrich the lives of our community and help promote lifelong learning. So, we thank the city for all of their support and all of our city departments for also helping support us through a lot of our endeavors and also to the community. So, thank you so much.
Is my hair okay?
That's great. Thank you so much.
The third proclamation is for Arbor Day, and I'd like to welcome Ask Up, Jason Manfield, park manager, Bob Sardar, park advisory board, George Halas, trees are us, and I don't see Ron. Come on up. Did I get everybody that's here? Oh, hi Scott.
He's kind of shy.
It's not the Scott I know, but all right. From the office of the mayor. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I Gregory Adamson, on behalf of the Robert S. Gallagher, Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in our community, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
Here, here.
Who's talking?
Mr. Sartor.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, I'm also happy to announce that we received, again, the Tree City USA Award from Arbor Day Foundation. We also received the Growth Award, and also want to present to the city for their new budget from Mid-America Energy Company, the maximum amount that they give in grants to cities, a check for $2,000, which I guess I give to Jason over there. We will be at Paul Norton, April 28th, Friday, I think about 10:00 AM, to have an Arbor Day tree put in there, so that's it.
All right.
Here, here.
I wanted to ask...
They spelled my name wrong.
I wanted to...
Thanks, Jason.
Nice job, everybody.
Nice job, Greg.
We have now come to the public request of council. If there's anyone here that would like to be heard on an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity to be heard. Please limit your comments to two minutes and try not to be repetitive. Please refrain from outbursts like clapping and yelling. Be respectful with your comments. Please approach the podium in the back, state your name and address, and then you may address the City Council. The podium to the back, sir. How you doing, sir?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Long time no see.
Well, I stopped in the office today and saw Michelle. She said I didn't need to be on the agenda to discuss what I wanted to discuss, but I appreciate everybody's time. My name is Tom Stopoulos. I'm at Maple Glen, Maple Glen Association, on Devil's Glen in Belmont. And one of the things that we've noticed, and I'm sure maybe you have noticed and maybe haven't noticed, the amount of traffic and noise, both the increase both with Quickstar and with Aldi. So, it's just, this is a natural occurrence. We understand from a traffic flow. But one thing that we've had noticed really quite frequently, especially as the weather turns, is that there seems to be young people that congregate over at the Quickstar late into the night with, you know, their hoods up and the stereos and boom boxes going. And really, we feel, a lot of us in the association, not only can hear it, but we can feel it in our beds when the stereo vibrates. So, a couple of weeks ago, I called 911 because I know that they route the officers from there, but to see if anything could be done by the officers from law enforcement to really sit down maybe with management at the Quickstar. You know, because I understand it's their property. They have to manage it. However, with the amount of noise and traffic back and forth, but the kids seem to be, you know, just kind of congregating on the corner there, you know, not away from the gas pumps. But it's begotten, it's to the point where really, every night sometimes, you'll hear up till midnight, 1 o'clock, you'll hear boom boxes. So, I don't know what the city's position is, what law enforcement's position is to maybe to go in there and try to curtail this on behalf of the residents on Maple Glen and on Devil's Glen. I understand it's private property, and I do understand that, you know, with the traffic flow, with people coming and going, there's not much you can do. But we were curious about decibel levels for traffic, you know, motorcycles, glass packs. Those things would like to, on behalf of the Maple Glen Association, would maybe want some clarification on those ordinances that might affect noise. But I suppose the question is, is there a position or awareness of this particular situation up at the Quickstar shop late at night? And what is the city, what is their position to do to maybe help curtail that somewhat?
Thank you. Thank you. So, I would say I don't know if all the officers are aware of that issue to that level. So, what I'm thinking here is, I think what I'll start off with doing, and I'm kind of surprised because I know that generally, the Quickstar, other Quickstars in our jurisdiction generally do, like the one at 18th and 53rd, they're generally pretty good about calling the police on their own when issues like that come up. So, I will make it a point to stop up there personally and talk with management, make them aware, and then kind of see where they're at with it so that, so they can maybe proactively take care of it. But obviously, if they're not comfortable, at least they can maybe even initiate, you know, initiate the call. We do have, you know, we have curfews too. So, but yeah, so I will definitely follow up with Quickstar and specific to those issues.
And I understand they do have a new, I believe they have a new night manager that's been an improvement from, she will go out and kick a little bunny if she has to, to maybe move the guys out of there. But, you know, it's sporadic, and all that we want to do is to make sure that we're addressing it and we're kind of consistent, because if they see it over and over again and they push them out, the guys won't, it's simple. They won't come back, you know? I mean, I think everybody, everybody in this room in high school had a little place to go to make some noise, but this seems to be the, one of the hangouts. You know, it used to be Hy-Vee lot. Now, I believe a lot of it's moved over to that Quickstar lot, right on that north, that south, or the, yeah, the southwest corner there. So, any rate, we just, you know, I didn't know... the southwest corner there. So, any rate, we just, you know, I didn't know how aware that the city council was of this problem. You know, it may not, you know, if you're three blocks away, you're not going to notice it. But in Maple Glen Homeowners Association, we notice it because it's so loud and it's so late into the night. So, we just want to make sure that we work with you to see if there's anything that can be done. Because, you know, we can't go over there and tell them to turn it down. They'll just, you know, tell us to go back to bed. So, you know.
No, thanks.
I'm not big enough to start a fight, so I'm not, I'm not gonna.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. At least you have my word, I will stop up there personally and will also notify the shift officers that are working those hours to maybe, as they're driving. Because as you know, we go up and down Devil's Glen a lot, just to keep an extra eye out. And obviously, we will do the best we can, but if there's a specific situation that the residents over there, please don't hesitate to call the non-emergency number. If you're not bothering us, we'll send an officer right up there too. But we'll try and be a little more maybe proactive in having these conversations so we, you don't have to resort to calling us all the time.
On a related item, is there a noise ordinance that's enforced on Devil's Glen on, since there's a stoplight there and now you've got, you know, different stops and starts in that quadrant there, you know, it's back and forth and the guys will hit into the first gear and let it go. Is there some ordinance on noise that is published that we can refer to at all?
There is a noise ordinance. It's very challenging, because obviously, if we're not there or observing it, you know, and the decibel levels change depending on the time, and it's that differentiation of what's normal, there's some subjectivity to it too. And being able, you know, we don't have a way to like, get an immediate decibel level on a specific vehicle, but if, but any of the main thoroughfares, it's an issue probably throughout the city at times from traffic lights. So I, because you've got that traffic light there where they're going to be starting up after it turns green.
After it turns red, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's it.
Thanks, Tom.
Justin, you want to get Tom's contact information? Thank you.
Just, chief, just for your information, I have a relative that works, happens to work at that. And they, the management is aware of the problem and is looking for some help too. So I think they'll be very, very.
Yeah, I think, I think there have been some improvements, but I just want to make sure that, you know, it's like anything, I put a note out to the whole association today, late notice, because I saw Michelle today and I didn't know tonight would be the night. But, you know, the more people are aware of it, it just brings more attention to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you, on the way, could you give Captain Paul and your information, phone number?
Sure.
That way I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That's the best contact.
Okay, we appreciate your comments, sir. I'll close the public request of council now and move on to our first public hearing. First public hearing tonight is to approve the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bonds, series 2022A. For this item, we'll hear from our finance director, Jason Shat.
Thank you, Your Honor. You'll recall that in the spring of 2022, we issued $700,000 in general corporate purpose bonds as part of that 2022A bond series, with the intent to spend those funds at Palmer Hills Golf Course. Since then, the projects there have been too cost prohibitive to proceed with. So we are recommending reallocating that $700,000 general corporate purpose bond to the landing project and specifically the ice rink portion of the landing project. I've worked with our bond council, Allers, to write up the resolution and the reallocation of these funds just requires a public hearing and resolution by council. So that's what we're asking for tonight.
Okay. Any questions from council for Jason before we open the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding is that the intent of this is for the ice rink, and I support that. However, I look at the resolution and it's rather broad and gives you a lot of flexibility. So I guess I would like the meeting minutes to read that if any of this money is required at a later date for the pool, that we have a separate resolution from the council to approve that.
I think we can do that. And like I said, I worked with Allers to have the resolution written up. And in communication with them, it's important that they understand the purpose of the bonds, and we were very clear that it was the ice rink. So, to make a change, I think would require another resolution of council. So, I think that would.
Can I get to what you're looking for?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay. So, open the public hearing with regard to the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bonds, series 2022A, of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Go to the council, go to council member Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action in approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bonds, series 2022A, of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa. I move the approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Palzinski.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Council has unanimously approved the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds, proceeds of general obligation bond, series 2022A. Next is a public hearing, items 10 and 11, which we talked about earlier at the committee of the whole. Regarding the adoption of the city's 2023-24 budget and certification of taxes, Jason Shat, will you please update us for the folks that weren't watching earlier?
Right. I'll do an encore performance of the presentation we did for committee of the whole. And I think we'll all be relieved to know that this is likely the last presentation on fiscal year 2324 budget. But as you know, the fiscal year 2324 budget that will begin on July 1 of 23, takes advantage of continued growth in property valuation and will maintain the city's property tax levy rate at 1265 per 1,000 of taxable valuation, the same as it is this year. This limits property tax increases on the average home, but really most homes, to less than 1%. And important note, I talk a lot about how growth is kind of the economic engine of Bettendorf and we benefit greatly from all of the continued construction of new properties around town. 80% of new tax revenue in FY2324 is attributable to that new growth and new constructed properties. The budget provides funding for necessary staffing additions and community development and solid waste. We'll fund the IT strategic plan, including the replacement of the city's financial system, which many people around town are very excited about. Funds an aggressive CIP, including Forest Grove Road, Middle Road, and the landing project, and requires moderate fee increases in the city's utility enterprise funds. The public hearing notice that was published in the paper contemplated a budget and levy rate at $12.70 per 1,000 of taxable value, but council can adopt a budget and levy rate less than 1270, not more. Staff is recommending that we adopt the budget at the levy rate of 1265 and still fund those positions we talked about. To maximize the city's potential task, tax growth under the pending legislation in Des Moines, we recommend combining all levies currently utilized into a single general fund levy. You'll see to the right here in light blue, FY23, how we've allocated those levies out for a total of 1265. In FY24, we're suggesting we combine several of them into the general fund levy at 780 and continue the debt service levy at 485 for a total of $12.65 per 1,000 of valuation. The impact on property tax bills is pretty minimal. The average assessed value for a home in Bettendorf in 2022 was 272,723 dollars. That was a non-assessment year, so there's really no impact to taxes based on value this year. However, the rollback was increased. The state rollback increased from 54.13% to 54.65%. That adds $18 to this average home's tax bill. Our levy rate will not change, so there's no change, impact to taxes there. So in total, taxes on that mean home, the average home, will be up $18 or just slightly less than 1%. On the commercial side, we have a property, an average property of just over a million bucks. The rollback on commercial property is 90%. However, the first 150,000 this year will be taxed at the residential rate, the 54.65%. So that wipes away about $670 on the tax bill for that million dollar property. Again, we don't change the levy rate, no impact there. Total impact, all the way to the right then, is a reduction of $670 on that commercial property, or down about 6%. We are increasing fees in the utilities. So the table here shows the impact of not only those fees, but also the change in property tax. You get kind of the full picture of the cost of owning these average properties in Bettendorf for the year. Working down the residential column, we have the $17.94 increase in taxes. Our sewer fees will go up about 15 cents per unit. That'll cost that homeowner $13.20 for the year. Stormwater fees are up 20 cents per ERU, that's $2.40 for the year. And solid waste fees will go up 3%. That's the, and then based on the 65 gallon cart, that's an increase of $6.36. All told, the increase for the full year, $39.90 or $3.33 per month. Total cost of those services, $2,503, are up just 1.6%. If you wanted to look at those same types of costs and apply them to other cities and compare around the state, I'll bring you back to FY2223. We don't know where everyone's going to land yet for the new fiscal year. But in the current fiscal year, if you added up the property taxes, the fees at the utilities, and applied that $272,000 home in any one of these 20 other cities around the state, you'll see that we stack up pretty well. We're in eighth position of the 21 cities. And those top eight are very, very tight in their costs. These are typically the growing cities as well, places like Urbandale, West Des Moines, Johnston, Ankeny, and Bettendorf included there. The average cost of city services for these 21 cities is 2,866. So at 2,447, we feel pretty good about where we land, considering the value of the services we provide.
Okay, media will play louder.
Don't know how that happened.
And just to kind of hammer that point a little further, if you remove the debt levy from that calculation, but apply every other cost. We know that our debt levy is high in Bettendorf. It funds that aggressive CIP that I talked about at the top. But we counteract that by being very lean on the operating side. So if you just look at our operating costs and how those are passed on to residents, you'll see that we fare very well. We're in the first position of the 21 cities at $1,754. This is the cost of the city services operationally on that average home. So, pretty proud of that fact. And again, that is the extent of my presentation tonight. We kept it pretty brief because we've talked about this now for what seems like several months. It's only been a few, a little bit longer than usual. But with that, I hope to see a budget adopted. Thank you.
Any questions from council for Jason? Jason, I've received quite a few calls, I'm sure everybody else has, about the assessment that came out. That does not, doesn't affect anything for 18 months, correct?
Right. So the assessments that recently hit mailboxes here this month are actually effective and taxed in FY2425. So the next budget is when we'll be talking about the levy rate that will apply to that value. And I would also note that 100% assessed value does not directly translate to tax dollars because there's several factors that reduce your assessed value down to taxable value, including that 54% rollback. So, we will likely see a rollback of less than 54% next year to kind of counteract some of this significant growth we've seen around town. But important to know that, one, assessed value is not taxable value, and two, the 23 assessments are not taxable until FY2425, that begins July of '24.
And at that time, we'll look at the numbers and adjust accordingly.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I know it was pretty shocking. I think a lot of people got pretty, pretty good increases.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay. So, open the public hearing with regard to the adoption of the city's fiscal year 2324 budget and certification of taxes. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing. Go to council member Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution adopting the city of Bettendorf FY2324 budget and certification of taxes in the city's five-year capital improvements program. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Thank you to everybody, staff, department heads, everybody, especially you and your crew. That's a lot of work. And hopefully, this legislature's not going to do anything drastic in their final days up there in Des Moines.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll call the roll now.
Okay, Michelle, yeah, please call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Palzinski.
All right. Honor, can I make a statement?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
So, I just wanted to reiterate what Mayor Protemtem, whatever the appropriate title is, Mayor Temtem. This was a long drawn out budget because of all the changes that we had to make relative to the state. Want to commend the department heads, the division heads, everybody involved in making this happen, and the council for all of the patience we had in the work sessions that you had. You asked a lot of great questions of us and trying to figure out how we were going to try to balance this. And we think it's a fair budget. We think that it reflects what you wanted in terms of the vision and targets that you gave us to try to implement. And we believe that this will make that happen. And we think we all did pretty good work, and we commend all of you for your work at this table. So, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So, the council has unanimously adopted the city's 2324 budget and certification of taxes in the city's five-year capital improvement plan. Thank you, everyone. The third public hearing is on reference items 12 and 13. And it's a public hearing regarding the 2023 pavement markings program. For this, we will ask our city engineer, Brett Morlock, to give an explanation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Honor. This is our annual street painting program, so that includes all the long lines, the yellow and white lines that you see on your streets, all the crosswalks, and all of the symbols that you'll see at mainly intersections and turn lanes.
Okay.
Pretty simple.
Any questions from council? Yes, sir.
Brett, we had talked earlier about the new pavement markings on the I-74 bridge and how visible they are. Is there any of that for our major arteries in the city in this year's budget?
There is not. So we have two major types of pavement markings that we have out there. We have some that are called durable paint. It's a much more expensive process, but it's an epoxy paint that's actually, the streets are ground down and they actually sit a little bit below the surface of the street. So they tend to last quite a bit longer, but they are anywhere from three to five times your normal painting cost. We do those on our large federal aid projects, so Forest Grove, 18th Street, a couple sections of Middle Road, I think, have them. But unfortunately, we don't have anyone in the Quad Cities that does that work, which also leads to another issue. The closest contractor, I think, is in Wisconsin that comes down. What they did on I-74, the high contrast markings would probably be on the range of eight to 10 times what we're paying. So, not something that we're probably going to explore. I do know we've had some questions, Brian had mentioned, just on any ways that we can try to help with our reflectivity. And unfortunately, we've talked to the contractor that's done our program the last couple of years, Ostrom Painting, they've done painting all around the country, military bases. There's really only those two. There's really only those two options right now. There are a few emerging technologies, nothing that we're probably going to see in our climate yet, that's just the other contributing factor is snowplows. The only difference I've seen of any of the cities in the area that does it differently is Davenport actually paints theirs twice a year, but obviously that would require doubling our budget to do so. Could be something we could look at, we do fund that out of road use, so we do have a little more flexibility there. So, that's probably the only recommendation I would consider making going forward if we did want to make a change and try to have a little more visibility throughout the year, where we could paint in the spring and in the fall, as opposed to just the summer.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Scott, anything? Mr. Nauman?
He's gone.
Oh, he's gone? Okay. Anything? Okay. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence?
No, we did not.
With regard to the same? Okay. So, open the public hearing with regard to the twenty twenty-three pavement markings program. Is there anyone here that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's close the public hearing, council member Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the twenty twenty-three pavement markings program. I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any, anything discussed? If not, Michelle, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle. Counsel has unanimously approved the plan specifications in form of contract for the twenty twenty-three pavement markings program. Talk about the consent agenda, last item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All items on tonight's consent agenda need to be approved. Like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any particular items anyone wants to talk about? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to comment about two items. First one is item B, which is the alley rehab program. This is what, the seventh or eighth year that we've been in that program?
Dear.
And, and that's a very successful program, and thanks to Public Works for their effort on that, and thanks to my fellow council members for continuing that, since much of that work is in the first ward and Bill's third ward. But that's a good, that's been a good program, I get a lot of positive comments from the public on that. And the second item is item C, which is Meyer Park Playground Equipment. That's again, a very good project, it's been particularly needed since the school district closed Jefferson School down there and demolished their playground, which was also used by the neighborhood, and this, this is a good project. And on both these items, I'd like to comment that while we see a lot of money being spent at the north end of town, just because that's where new construction is going, we're building a lot of roads up there, we are also investing in the older part of town, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Anything else?
I got a comment on item, item G, the renewal with Zen City. Can, one of the, maybe Angie, if you're overseeing that still, can you just share with everyone how that program's working? I, I've found it very interesting from a technological perspective, being able to monitor what the, what's being said about the city. Can you share some highlights from this past six to eight months?
Yes, I'd love to. In fact, I will be in the coming weeks, I will have an insight report for you from Zen City, I'm going to start sharing that with the council over the next year or so, just to show you kind of a snapshot of what we're seeing through Zen City. Zen City's a tool that we can use internally to see what kind of topics and subjects are popping up and gathering more attention. We can also look and see from our social media platforms what posts and stories and pictures and videos are gaining the most traction, so we know that we're on the right track when it comes to our social media presence. But one of the coolest things that we've been utilizing this year is a program called Zen City Engage, and this is how we're going to be engaging our residents on the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. So, that is how residents have been signing up for the focus groups over the last couple of weeks, and when there is the community survey available, it'll be on that website, it'll be a great place for residents to go to learn all about this project. We are also going to be using Zen City Engage for the comprehensive plan that's going to be coming up later this year as well. So, you'll be seeing more and more of how we can use Zen City to the max of what we are paying for it. It's a great tool, we're really finding new things about it every single day.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Michelle, please cause the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Great, all items in the consent agenda have passed unanimously, is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Seeing nothing? Like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We are adjourned.
I saved myself. Okay, one second. Is that?